Okay, good evening. I am not the chair, but I'm running the meeting today. And I will call this meeting to order. And the secretary, will you please take role?
Nancy Borchardt, excused. Christina Jones. Jack Nash.
Here.
Dennis Browning.
Present.
Bruce Gale, excused. Fenobia Dallas.
Here.
Bill Assash.
Here.
Um, you have a quorum.
So everybody has gotten their minutes from the previous meeting?
Yeah.
The motion to approve, not approve?
Motion to approve the minutes from the last, uh, meeting.
Need a support?
Support.
Okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is, this is gonna be really interesting, because this type is really small, okay?
Oh, sorry.
The function of this board is to provide zoning flexibility. The action of this board can be an interpretation, which involves an interpretation of the zoning code text or zoning district boundaries. We may also issue variances, which is an appeal to vary from the strict application of the zoning code. The meeting is videotaped. It is important that only one person speak at a time, and the audience shall observe the respect of the speaker. When the appeal is, in which you are interested, is called, please come forward to the podium and allow the board a moment to review the material, after which you will give your name and address to the secretary. After the appellate presentation, anyone interested in the appeal may come forward, give his or her name, address to the secretary. Please make your comments brief and to the point. All questions should be directed to the board and not the appellant. The board will discuss the appeal vote and continue to the next appeal. An affirmative vote of two-thirds of the board, or four votes, shall be necessary to decide in favor of an appeal. The action of the board is final. The only relief is through the courts. And what they're saying about that, you see, you have five members that are here today, and in order for it to be positive, you have to have four, okay? Please be advised that use and dimensional variances expire in six months from the date of the meeting. Thank you. Any questions? So secretary, could you please call the first appeal?
Um, we skipped approval of agenda.
Can I make a motion to re-approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now can you call them?
Now we have elections.
That first?
Yep.
Do we have enough members to actually have an election?
Yeah, a quorum.
Well, we have a quorum, but are the people here that will participate, or want to do that or not?
We could postpone, if you would like.
What would you suggest? Because we have two alternates, I think, today.
We have two alternates.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if Nancy's gonna like the fact that we extend this out one more month. But it's up to you guys. If you think we should postpone for another one, I will not be here the next meeting, so.
Good, then you'd be the chair.
Okay, now, I don't care. If you can do it now. How many officers are elected?
Uh, we have a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary.
Agreed.
Do you have to be present to be nominated?
No.
It doesn't seem fair.
But it's up to you. If you're comfortable waiting, we can wait.
I, I would suggest we wait one more meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. We postpone one more meeting.
Okay. Then, um, our first case for today, and only case, will be case J night, J, um, 20. Sorry, there's a typo on this. J 20 dash 0006. There'll be a public hearing for a variance request to decrease the parking stall length and building setback for a new development to be located on Covenant Campus, which is located in the Riverfront Mix Use in the District. And then we need to open a public hearing, sorry.
We're open to public hearing, and anybody that would like to present that, they could go to the public podium.
Uh, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Scott Robach. I'm with H E D. Um, the address is 26913 Northwestern Highway in Southfield, Michigan. Uh, we are the architects and engineers for this new building here in Saginaw. Um, it's on the Covenant Campus, but it's in a partnership with Mary Freebed, who is a world-renowned rehabilitation, uh, center. Uh, I'm gonna just kinda introduce the project, then I'll bring Mark up, who can talk about the variances we're requesting, requesting, and why. So, this is a, a new building, like I said, on the Covenant Campus. Ninety thousand square foot. It's gonna go onto an existing parking lot, um, at the northwest corner of, um, Cooper and Bond, and right to the south, it's on, is Houghton. So, uh, it's a ninety thousand square foot, three-story. The first story is outpatient rehab, and then the second and third stories have sixty beds of inpatient rehab. Um, and, uh, that's a summary of the project, I guess, and then we'll get right to business with Mark here. Oh, yeah, the, it's, it's kind of on a, a tight spot. It's an existing parking lot, um, so there, there, we're not gonna be able to get the number of parking spaces, uh, on the actual lot, but, um, Covenant has purchased the, uh, property across the street, where they'll have, uh, about a two-hundred-and-fifty additional spaces. On our, our actual property, um, there's going to be only handicap spaces and out, and a select number of outpatient spaces, and a specify, or a ambulance-only parking space. Um, and, uh, to assist some of the people who may not be able to find a spot on that, there'll be valley parking as well, so.
I'm, uh, Mark Heber. I'm a landscape architect with H E D. Uh, the Architecture Engineering and Landscape Architecture Firm at 26913 Northwestern Highway in Southfield. Um, I've been the site planner on this project, and I'm a, uh, you can call me a little bit of, uh, of a, sort of focused person when it comes to stormwater, especially urban stormwater. And one of the reasons that we've put one of these variances in front of you is to talk about that issue, uh, not only on a site scale, but reflecting to a broader scale within Saginaw. So, allow me to orient you. You can follow along. These drawings are exactly in the order that they are in your packet. So, Scott mentioned the location of the site, uh, which is near the, um, west edge of, of the Covenant Campus, uh, and, um, it's, it's bounded by residential on the west side, uh, across, uh, Bond, and on the north side, across Cooper. On the south side, across Houghton, is another Covenant, uh, hospital facility, in a doctor parking lot. This is sort of a aerial oblique of the view of the campus, and this yellow dash line, uh, represents the approximate configuration of the building footprint on the site. So we're gonna talk to you about, uh, two variances request. One is the parking stall depth, which relates to stormwater in part, and the other is, um, because of a condition that we have connecting into this pedestrian bridge here, uh, with a new pedestrian link, uh, coming into the second floor of our building. It's forcing, uh, the building to move a little further south toward Houghton, toward the doctor parking lot across the street, uh, by just a few feet, and we're requesting a variance on the setback that's back there. These images just show the current condition. This is a parking lot, as Scott mentioned. One of the things I wanna point out, uh, on this is, the de facto way that most people park is they drive their car until their wheels hit something. Most of the time, that's a curb. And you can see in these images that most of the cars are overhanging the curb by about two feet. The areas that we're requesting, um, relief, a butt green spaces here, here, and here. And, um, essentially, uh, what we're looking for on the variance request for the stall depth is to allow what currently happens anyway, uh, the overhang of cars to happen across the curb, and therefore, a reduction in the depth of the stall by the same amount. So this graphic shows the existing condition. The requirements, uh, in Saginaw are for an eighteen-and-a-half-foot stall depth and a twenty-six-foot-wide drive aisle, for a total bay dimension of sixty-three feet. I'm pointing out here two vehicles that are sort of common. Uh, the most common sedan in America, the Toyota Camry, is sixteen feet, one inches long. And that's from nose to tail. So take two feet of that, which is the overhang on the front end of the car, and the actual effective depth of a Toyota Camry is fourteen feet. And we're providing an eighteen-and-a-half-foot stall. A Chevy Suburban, one of the biggest vehicles on the street, uh, measures eighteen feet, eight inches long. If you take that vehicle, let its overhang, uh, on the curb line, it is effectively sixteen feet, eight inches. So, the eighteen-and-a-half-foot stall, uh, that is required by Saginaw, exceeds all of those by several feet. Now, why is this an issue? I, I bring along this stall depth comparison that I shared with you just now, you know, in your packet, just to sort of demonstrate as a benchmark what happens in other municipalities. Uh, I looked at Detroit, Ann Arbor, Midland, uh, and several other locations that are sort of in the area of, of Michigan. And, um, every one of them provides some relief on stall depth. Uh, Saginaw doesn't, currently. This is an issue in many municipalities that have a combined sewer situation. One sewer built for sanitary and storm. When you have a large rainfall, uh, that storm, sanitary sewer combined, uh, gets overwhelmed, because there's so much impervious surface, uh, and rains are coming at higher intensities. Uh, so, these municipalities are seeking ways to alleviate that. The city of Saginaw is requiring us to store stormwater, uh, in this urban setting below our parking lot, at a huge cost, which very appropriate, and release it very slowly, so that it doesn't over, overwhelm the storm sewer, storm sanitary. My observation is that parking lots are a huge contributor. So are streets and buildings, but parking lots are a massive contributor to stormwater contribution into these combined sewers, causing this overflow. And if we simply reduce the stall depth to properly reflect what size vehicles we actually have on the street, we can cut out just, just a very simple broad brush, eight percent of the surface area of a parking stall. Eight percent is a huge amount of water, over time, contributed by every single parking lot in the city. So, as a focus here, uh, I'm trying to help us, uh, not only see more green space, which we think is very desirable, but in addition to that, obviously, a lower cost for the owner, because they don't have to build as much parking lot, not as much asphalt. But the bigger, broader thing is contribution of stormwater into the combined sewer system, and trying to alleviate that. I'm hopeful that whether or not you grant this variance for us tonight, uh, there's a dialogue that starts about the ordinance in general, and what you might wanna do in the future, as far as the way Saginaw treats these impervious surfaces. So that's, that's the purpose of why we're making this request. You can see by this graphic that the current bay dimensions, Saginaw, remember, is sixty-three feet. Uh, all of these municipalities are somewhere between sixty feet and fifty-eight, and then they all provide relief on stall depth overhang, between one-and-a-half and two feet. So the effective dimension that they afford when you butt a green space is somewhere between fifty-six and fifty-four feet. Saginaw's at sixty-three. That's a lot of pavement. A lot of pavement that's contributing a lot of stormwater. So, I, I'm hopeful that you consider this. We certainly would, um, appreciate the opportunity to demonstrate it to the city as a means of helping to decrease stormwater. Okay? And if you have any questions, if you wanna dialogue on this, is that okay?
Yep.
Uh, please feel free to, to pose questions. The second variance that we're requesting has to do with this piece of the building right here, on the very southern end, adjacent to Houghton. The setback requirement is fifteen feet. What we're requesting is that the setback be adjusted to be not less than ten. We think it's gonna be probably more around twelve-and-a-half, uh, but we're still in the process of finalizing the architecture, so we're asking for, uh, not less than ten as the new setback in this specific edge. The reason that we need to have this is that, this is, this is a, uh, view of the knuckle of the bridge, and I'm gonna just flip this around to show you, again, for orientation purposes. This knuckle right here, where the bridge turns corner, is right here. It has, the bridge itself has a pretty significant steel structure that supports it as it spans across from column to, to knuckle in this direction. Here are columns. Here's a knuckle. The opening to fit into that steel structure without a tremendous amount of modification to the bridge. And where the corridor is in the building, to make those line up, we need to move the building down a little bit, causing this, uh, encroachment into the southern setback. Without that, we'd have to spend several hundred thousand dollars to adjust the steel structure of the bridge, and we think that that is not necessarily a good expenditure. Certainly, as we face a hospital campus and the doctor parking lot on that side of the building, we don't, uh, think it's gonna be a significant, um, visual encroachment for the neighborhood. And furthermore, our intent is to landscape that whole zone, uh, quite heavily. Uh, so, we think that we're gonna soften it quite a bit, actually better than it is now, which is a parking lot.
I got a question.
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
Yeah.
You're talking about the variance there, and, and that would be the south end of there.
Yeah.
And the reason we're moving the building that has not been constructed at all, it's only still in the design process, is for that to be able to fit and, uh, between those two steel columns. Is that correct?
Yeah. The, the columns here.
So.
Exist.
Yes. And so, you're saying that you would have to change the bridge, but in all reality, if you changed the architectural drawing or the architectural layout, you could make that fit?
Yeah.
Please do. Um, healthcare design is pretty regimented, so what we're looking at here is the first floor. Do we have the second floor?
Yeah.
So we, code says that you have to have the patient rooms on the exterior of the building, so they have windows. In fact, in front of the windows, there has to be twenty-foot clearance, so you can't even put anything in front of those. So, the shape of a, a hospital building is pretty straightforward and mandated. We've got the, um, patient rooms on the exterior here, and then we have the rehabilitation gyms on the interior, uh, along with all of the service corridors, or the, the corridors, and the elevators, and the stairs, and the nursing stations. Um, and we are now as skinny as we possibly can be on this building. So, the corridors are basically where they need to be, and there isn't really a whole lot that we can do to rearrange that. In addition to not just being expensive, more expensive to here, to put the, um, this bridge up here, or move the building up, uh, the way that the bridge is constructed, constructed, between the column lines here and here, it's a joist, so the joist actually comes up this high. So, in order to cut through it, you would have to cut the joist. You'd have to shore the whole bridge up, um, cut the joist, and then install a beam under there. When you get down to here, it's not a joist anymore, it's a beam, which means it's under the floor. The structure of the bridge is under the floor, so you don't have to cut that out. You can just take the exterior wall off. Uh, moreover, and more important than the cost of, of, um, uh, reconstructing that, that portion of the bridge, is the fact that you would have to shut the bridge down, um, for however long it takes, whether it's two weeks or a month, and that is a main artery for the hospital, for patient transport, food transport, supply transport, and that's really moreover than the cost, what the driving factor is, of trying to shift the building down so the, the, uh, bridge lines up with the corridor properly.
So what's the, the lower part of the building, the proposed building? Is that the southern part down there? What is that down there?
Uh, more patient rooms.
So those patient rooms are not the same size as the other patient rooms?
The, due to, uh, budget.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're gonna have sixty rooms, but twelve of them are gonna be shelled spaces, which means we're, they're just gonna be empty. They're not gonna be, uh, fitted out with equipment or beds, and it'll probably be two to three years before they build those, and, until they can get the, the client base. So, on the third floor, there, um, there will be these rooms. The, the floor plan is the exact same, except on the third floor, those rooms are all built out, built out.
Okay, so, I'm looking at, it looks like the patient rooms on the, um, north. Is that north?
Yep. North is up.
So these are the patient rooms on the top, correct?
Uh, right here, I, I can walk you through. This is a conference room. This is a, um, nursing office. These are all patient rooms.
So I'm looking at the size of those patient rooms, and I'm looking at the size of the rooms on the southern part.
Yep.
This, this leg down here, that.
Down here?
Yeah.
Yeah. There are, this block here is two rooms, or it will be when they get built out.
I'm trying to figure out, they're the same size, that's...
You, you can see, these two walls here would equal these two walls here, so... In reality, this right now, when it first gets built out, it'll just be this corridor wall.
Right. The reason why I'm asking that, again, is because it, this is a plan, so this is where I see that, where some of that encroachment can be, um, addressed by just simply shifting this part of the building. I mean, I, what, two, three feet, whatever? I mean, I don't, I don't know. I'm just saying, that seems like to me that would be a, um, viable solution there. Because those aren't built out yet, in terms of patient rooms, you're saying, they're just a empty space?
Well, when they, when they do get built out, and the third floor is completely built out, and so that, that length.
We don't have that floor plan?
I, I mean, I...
I don't think we got that one.
No, I apologize, we don't have a third floor plan.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, but, these rooms here are exactly, exactly the same, and that is, that comes out of decades of, um, usage and research, and, and those rooms are exactly the same size, or the right size that they need to be, in, in regards to the bed, in regards to the head wall, that's, that's behind the bed, that has all of the medical gases and electrical outlets and all, all that it needs. Um, there are lifts, because this is rehabilitation hospital, there are lifts to, uh, in between the bed and the restroom, so they can actually lift the patient from the bed and put them into the, to the restroom. It's all pretty scientifically laid out, and, uh, we have got, got this building exactly the right size that it, that it needs to be.
So, what I'm hearing is, I'm following you. I'm over here, so these are a single unit that are built along that, that wall?
Correct.
I've been sitting here measuring, so I know that they're the exact size.
Mm-hmm.
And so this is, like you said, for future expansion, and because of the regulations and the strict that you talked about in the very beginning.
Right.
These sections have to be at that size for the future. So I, yeah, there's no way.
Yeah. Originally, just to take you through the, the design process of where we started and where we are now, the building was gonna be an additional thirty thousand square feet.
Right.
Um, and so we have, we've really gotten as, absolutely as efficient on the size of the footprint that we possibly can.
One more, one more question, then, too. On this future expansion over here, I just see there's one doorway. So then, in, when it future expands, would they then add doors?
Yes.
Okay.
And I wish we had the third floor planned, because it is exactly like the second floor plan, except for those shelled spaces, which will be built within two to three years. If not, if they can, if they can find the money from now until April, they'll build them down.
So going back to the top of the, the top-left corner, that's a patient room, and then the next one, it looks like that's the future, uh-uh, down.
Oh.
And then the next space, is that an office or a nurses, nurses station or something? That's a different-sized room. That's what I was looking at.
This one here is, um, I believe it's, it's nursing stations.
Okay. I don't, I don't think these blocks were designed for hospitals, that's the problem. These are, these are residential blocks, right?
Yeah.
So there's some restrictions on the amount of land that you can use.
If I, for clarification, where the proposed, uh, walkway is on that diagram, what is the, um, space that's, uh, just south of that walkway over? That's a large, very large room. Uh, go to the walkway. Nope. Go to the walkway, or goes to the bridge, right there. What is that room right down there?
This, you know, that's, that's an excellent question, because now it answers your previous question. It's day dining, so dining room and, um, just relaxing room. Uh, you can get out of your, out of your bedroom when you're not actually... Most of the time during the day is spent exercising and rehabbing, but that is a all-purpose room where you can play games or eat. Um, if you have visitors, they can come in, uh, and, and just sit in there and get away from you, yes. Yeah.
And all of that, um, faces south, and there, that's a green roof that looks onto. This, this area right here is a green roof.
Sure. But that is a cafeteria-type room there. So the problem still exists, that the corridor, if I'm looking at this right, then that hallway, the corridor, must be continuous from one end to the other without any bend or any churn?
This, this corridor?
Yep. Yep. The one that leads to the walkway. Does that have to be continuous, or can that widen out at that point?
Um, code says that these corridors have to be eight feet, and that's what...
Could it be twelve?
It could be wider.
Could it be fifteen at that point, when you get down to that end? Could that then, then be wider?
Down here?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah.
So, one of the issues is that they're bringing patients on gurneys from the hospital down the bridge.
Yes.
Into this door and down this corridor.
Okay.
So, highly desirable not to have any unusual kinks or bends or other things like that in that process, because obviously... that in that process, because obviously, a gurney plus all the gear on it is a good 7 feet plus, and they don't want to bang things and cause the patient any discomfort as they're moving them through.
That's, in looking at that, if you gave up 3 or 4, whatever feet you're asking for that south variance, if you gave it out in that corner of that room, you wouldn't need the variance.
You'd have a kink in the alignment, right?
The variance is really only affecting the very southern part of the building. That part is way...
He's asking to move south. They're asking to move that building south for the variance. 2 feet. 2 feet.
The issue is probably right here where the kitchen is.
May I approach, and so we can...
Sure, of course. All of this would have to move if you did that. You'd be able to shrink everything that far.
Why shrink? Why can't the whole building be moved 2 feet? The whole, you haven't even broke ground yet.
Right.
I'm asking, and you know, because that's what I'm asking, is this, can this then here, you know, be moved so that this becomes...
We're not supposed to be talking about...
Because this then would hook you in over here, right? So we're trying to avoid a kink in the corner, because the rest of the corridor...
You can't do what he's going to do.
That's not...
You're breaking the...
I have a question. What is the problem with the, giving you the 2-foot variance? What is the problem with that? I mean, what is it, what problem is it causing for the city or the residents or...
Again, we don't find any problem with it, especially because it doesn't face a residential neighbor. It actually faces toward a doctor parking lot across Houghton and more hospital campus, which is huge buildings. So our perspective is it's a very minor request, but something that we just have to make sure that we ask you because it's crucial for the way that this layout has to work on this site, unfortunately. If we had our druthers, we'd go back about 25 years and ask them to build a bridge about 2 feet further to the north so that the whole thing fit.
This is a question for staff. How long is, how long were these setback requirements in law city, how many years?
They were adopted in August of 2017. That was when the Riverfront Mixed Use District and the whole Form Based zoning code was implemented. This is a very miniscule movement of the setback, up to 5 feet, there'll still be 10 feet, they'll have that landscape buffer. Also, they're in the institutional district within the Riverfront Mixed Use, which has a clear indication that when it is part of a campus like Covenant, the rules can vary a little bit more, and that city, the city should consider their campus plan rather than just what ours is.
So I want to make a comment, because I understand with what you're saying. And if you look at this drawing right here, and I think, Christina, you're losing a little bit of grass. They're coming towards the road, which is a good thing. You want it more on the sidewalk. That's, that was the whole reason for a lot of our form-based design standards, so that you didn't have a lot of our buildings and also you don't have parking lots in front of the building. So I don't have a problem with losing grass, and you're going to landscape. If you were going the other way, then I would have more of an issue with that, so that, just want to make that statement.
Can, thank you. I want to go back to the issue about the parking stall length. Mark, I think this is your stormwater issue. First of all, since there'll be fewer cars parking there, I wouldn't think that would be an issue, because there'd be fewer cars parking because they're going to build this building here. That's just the first comment. The second comment I have, going back to the map you were talking about, on this side, will there be parking on this side of the building?
No.
Okay, so again, we're losing parking spaces, and I understand your issue about the parking stalls and the amount of stall depth, the drive aisle and the bay. I'm not really sure how that really is going to impact this area, because we're removing so much of the parking.
But you're going to get another parking lot, correct?
Well, so we're doing kind of a good thing here. We're putting in parking back, we're putting in a building, which is also impervious, but we do have more green space now on this site than we have currently with the parking lot that exists. But I also just want to, again, I'm thinking this site and I'm thinking bigger picture with you. Across the street, Covenant has bought enough land to put in 250 parking spaces. Now, nobody from Covenant has come in front of you and asked for anything on that, but again, just picture, there's 250 over here that we're going to build. If we could reduce all of that to the appropriate size, how much less stormwater from that lot, plus this lot? You know, you're basically just doing good in every place you can, using a softer solution, soaking up the rain into the ground as opposed to letting it run off into a pipe.
Are there any more questions about...
Because you've been talking about the water runoff, and I'm very cognizant of that, and I support that, especially when it comes to our storm sewers and stuff, too. I do not know exactly where this comes, but I have a friend of mine, and she works in a lot of this area. She's also talked about different forms of cement. Sometimes it can be a little bit more expensive, but they're more permeable.
Yes.
Where I think sometimes even the state of Michigan, I don't know what their laws or regulations are on that, but where the water actually goes through and not into the storm systems, which can also be a benefit.
Yes.
Now, I don't know how that factors into what you're trying to do here, because even when they talk about the other parking lot, again, I'm already thinking our storm sewers, and then you've got to build that underneath, and then you're kind of back in that same boat again.
Right. So pervious surfaces come in a lot of different forms, concrete, asphalt, as well as unit paving, as well as grass paving and other things like that, all have some degree of permeability. Some of the issues associated with it are that it requires quite a bit of maintenance in terms of keeping what the Germans call schmutzdecke, which is the stuff, leaves and blades of grass and dust and anything else that falls, starts to clog up those pores, those openings, so that the water can't get down into the subbase. So you have to vacuum that probably every six months on a surface like this. The second thing is, especially with the concrete and the asphalt, if you look at a permeable solution for both of those, they're very rough surfaces. We have a condition here, obviously, where we have people who may be amulatory challenged moving across our parking area. In fact, we're proposing on the site plan to have an area that the therapists want to use to help people cross the street. So we actually have a practice sidewalk, a crosswalk, that will be striped to go across to a green space in the parking lot that people can push a button for the walk signal and walk across, and then some stairs that they can climb up on the other side. So we're actually using the surface as part of the therapeutic solution in addition to, obviously, parking vehicles.
Thanks for that clarification, because now that you mentioned the rougher surface, I think there's a portion of highway from Freeland to Midland that's actually, it's like a porous concrete.
Right.
It is quite rough.
But you know it when you get on it in a rainstorm, because all of a sudden, you don't have any water coming up in your windshield, which is a nice thing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other, any other questions for the gentleman? So I have to say this three times, right, Cassie?
Two more.
Two more. Are there any more questions from the audience? Are there any more questions from the audience? Okay, now we're going to, we're going to go into closed session. We're going to talk about it between ourselves, and then we're going to vote on the issue.
At this point, are we closing the public hearing?
Public hearing is closed.
So I make a motion that will close the public hearing?
Public hearing is, all in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. Any discussion among the members of this, basically two variances?
I do want to mention, public notices were sent out to everybody, to property owners and residents within 300 feet, as well as a notice being posted in the Saginaw news. I got one phone call just asking questions, nobody else, nobody had anything against the project.
Also, just for clarification, we should take a really good look at the parking, the differences in the municipalities.
Yes.
Yeah, we need to take a hard look at that.
And Bill, to go to your point about the permeable pavement, the city right now does not allow permeable pavement within this district, so we could also go back and look and see if we want to change some of those guidelines.
Thank you. Any other questions, any other discussion about this project?
Well, I have no, I have no problems approving both 1 and 2 of the variances here. Number 1 being the building setback and number 2 being the parking stall depths. So I don't have any, I don't have any concern to that. The only thing that I would ask, that we could combine both those, would the members, would you want to vote on these individually? Because there's two different variances they're asking for. Or do you want to bundle those two together?
I think public hearing is this on one. It's only got one number.
They're together.
Well, they combine the two of them. They're combined.
So if you disagree with one of them, then obviously compare it to the other.
Okay.
It's all together.
Well, and you can, you can make a motion to modify them.
To separate them.
Or we could do one at a time, that's fine.
So do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I second the motion. Is there any more discussion?
I just had an observation, and not discussion, just an observation. Again, I don't see the need for changing the parking variance, because this doesn't really impact this small area.
I'm just talking about overall of the city.
And that's, that's, it was just an observation I wanted to make.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just talking. I've seen with the other cities.
Right.
I cannot get that.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All those?
Not in favor? Motion passes.
Now hurry up and get that building done. I noticed I didn't turn it that way. I kept this purposely the opposite way, because it's a Covenant model. I earned this model very hard, I'm telling you.
Is there any old business? Cassie?
Um, would you like to talk? No, there's not.
Is there any public comment? We have to sign all the papers? After all the papers are signed, I move to adjourn.